There we go.
Yeah, it's five o'clock on Wednesday, August 18th. We are having a special meeting for the Kids' Health Valley Healthcare Hospital District Number One, Board of Commissioners meeting at this time. We'll start off. Welcome, everybody.
Would you like a roll call?
Yeah, would you please?
I'm Bob Davis.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Here.
Erica Libinow. You're muted, Erica. See you there.
My spacebar is unmuting me, but I'm here.
There we go. John Ward.
He was on a previous meeting, so I wouldn't be surprised.
Okay, he may be running over. Terry Clark.
Here.
Julie Peterson. Here. Dr. Martin.
Here.
Scott Olander.
Here.
Vicky Mataro. She's absent. Mandy Olson.
Here.
Michelle Whirl.
Here twice, so I can share a file.
Thank you. Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Ron Erlacher.
Here.
Jeff Yamada.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Carrie Bar.
Here.
Dr. Larson.
Here.
Amanda Scott.
Here.
And then I believe we have DeeDee Atlee.
I'm here.
And Jason Adler.
I'm on here.
And then if there is anyone else, looks like we have Nicole Hilderman. And I believe that is everyone.
Great. Thank you and welcome to everybody. We'll just turn the time over to Julie.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank everyone for rearranging their schedules to accommodate this meeting. This is what we call a drop everything meeting when I convene these here at KVH. And so I appreciate Bob's willingness to do this and everyone's willingness to be here. I, things are fluid enough that I would like to take liberties a little bit with the agenda and talk about, in this order, the vaccine mandate. And I'm assuming all of you are aware that Governor Jay Inslee on August 9th issued a vaccine mandate for all healthcare workers. And I have asked Mandy and Amanda primarily to speak to that and how that's going to roll out. I also want to update you kind of on the current state here at KVH as well as in hospitals in our state. And I've asked Dr. Martin, Rhonda, Carrie, and Amanda to give you a briefing on that. And then tomorrow I will be meeting via Zoom with the Board of Health. And I want, before I talk to the Board of Health about what's going on, I want to make sure my own board hears it first. In conjunction with that, I'd also like to get the boards, get the board to weigh in on a public message that we're contemplating sending out, something that would go in the newspaper, on social media, and to all of our employees. So anyways, I will kick this off by talking a little bit about the vaccine mandate. As I said, this came out on August 9th. Amanda, can you pull up that calendar for me? And as you will hear, the mandate, the definition of employees and healthcare workers is very, very broad. So by October 18th, anyone who falls under the governor's order needs to be fully vaccinated. So we have to back that up, of course, to allow for two weeks post the final shot. It also includes not just our employees, but it includes contractors. What do we mean by contractor and how do we manage that? And how do we manage terminations? This is a condition of employment. So Amanda's specifically going to address the conversations we're having with the unions. Obviously, there's a critical staffing component of this. So it's the vaccine mandate, I think, prior to the governor's pronouncement or proclamation, I think the Hospital Association and a lot of us thought that there would be a testing option on this. The governor came out during the proclamation and said, "The time for testing is over." So we had done some planning and kind of thinking about how we might test our unvaccinated folks a couple of times a week. So this has knocked us back on our heels a little bit. So with that said, the calendar here, you see that by the end of this week, we intend to communicate with 163 members of our workforce. So these are employees whose vaccination status we cannot confirm. So Amanda and Mandy will talk about what that communication will look like. Can you scroll down? There we go. On September 3rd, we will require that those 163 people have communicated back to us which path they're going to take, if they're looking for exemptions, if they will be terminating, or if they plan to vaccinate. The last day, September 6th, which I just realized is Labor Day, is the last day for any of these folks who intend to be vaccinated with Moderna to get that first shot. On September 7th, we will begin the process of following each one of these 163 employees, depending on which plan they're on. September 13th is the last date for any of these folks to get their first shot of Pfizer. And then if you go down to October, October 4th is the second shot or JJ first shot, giving folks that two-week window that they need to be considered fully vaccinated. On October 18th, anyone who is not considered fully vaccinated is not meeting the conditions of employment at KVH. So I know that Mandy and Amanda are going to go over this in more detail, but I wanted to show you this upfront because the message is, "We are out of time. We're there already." So having said that, I will kick this off to Amanda and Mandy to talk about the vaccine mandate.
So do you want me to start, Amanda, or you want to go for it?
That'd be great. You can talk about our overall process and then I can talk about how HR fits into that. That'd be great. Thanks.
Perfect. So starting tomorrow, we'll be just double-checking that list of 163 and a letter will go to them in letting them know what the process is. But it will also have a form attached that we've drafted that asks them, you know, to indicate what their plan is for COVID vaccination. So whether they plan, they already are vaccinated and we don't have that documentation yet, and they will be providing that to us, or if they are going to schedule a time to get vaccinated, and we've included that timetable Julie shared in the form, or whether they will be seeking an accommodation, whether that is religious or medical. I'm going to let Amanda talk about that a little bit more. Or if they are not planning on complying with this order and that they are planning to resign. Either of the first two options, they'll be sending that into Employee Health by September 3rd. And if they pick either of the top two options, then Employee Health is going to help manage those folks, make sure we have our log updated with their information and are monitoring to make sure they are getting their vaccines in time with the help of their leaders. If either of the other two choices are selected, so seeking accommodation or intending to resign, those will be forwarded to HR and they'll begin reaching out and working with those employees. So we do have forms that we've developed that are aligned with the best practices that Wisha has shared today, just today. And we'll be revising our policies to make sure that they include these new mandates. And then we'll be going through a process too of ensuring if we don't receive someone's documentation by the 3rd, because like Julie said, tomorrow's like already here. I mean, it's going to be October 18th before we know it. Really getting in touch with those people as soon as possible because there are such tight timeframes on this. We, just a quick update too, though, about vaccine availability. Knowing that we may have some people who are kind of under the gun and have decided to get vaccinated. Anna and Catherine have been pursuing getting additional doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. They were not available on the state website to order as inventory recently. Catherine's been looking for other agencies that we could get it from, but we just heard today, Catherine found out today that we'll be able to order it September 6th. So we will be pursuing that, so we have that option available to our staff. And I think that's probably a good time to just say, let Amanda talk then about the accommodation process or how that will work with HR.
Perfect. Thank you, Mandy. So I think I want to tie back to one thing that Julie said specifically was just the broad definition of workforce in this mandate. So our forms that we've been working on, as Mandy mentioned, with infection control and HR and employee health, we're really focusing on our employee population and our volunteers. We recognize there's a whole other work around, work process that needs to happen with our contract staff, our students, our medical staff. So that's a separate process that we can talk about, but we had some great meetings today and we feel like we have a good plan to get some communication out and a plan for verification of those records with those groups, as that's hundreds, that's hundreds of people. I mean, we have hundreds of different contracts with services and staffing and various things. So but to go back to the accommodation process, so as Mandy mentioned, there'll be a general declination form that is either attesting that they have gotten the vaccination, they plan to get the vaccination, they are going to seek accommodation, or they're going to resign from their position. And there's going to be two accommodation forms if they choose that option. One would be a sincerely held religious accommodation. And I emphasize that because it is, it's not something that, you know, we're advised or that we really can, you know, interrogate people too much or question people too much, nor would we want to. But it is important, you know, if we're hearing comments like, "Oh, well, you know, my medical exemption didn't work and I'm going to try my religious exemption now," then we can stop and have conversations with staff and say, "Okay, you know, what's really going on here?" Because we just need to understand really which route you're taking and we need to be able to verify that.
Amanda, can I just mention what's key to that is there's not a personal conviction.
Right.
From this.
Absolutely. It's not based on personal belief or philosophy, and they really emphasize sincerely held religious belief. And then the medical form is the same thing. This is not unlike other accommodations. We go through this process all the time, actually. So luckily, it's something HR is very familiar with, although the nuances to this are still quite challenging to navigate. But the process itself, we do have a medical accommodation form that a provider will need to fill out, explaining how receiving the COVID vaccine would conflict with a medical condition. And they brought up some very valid ones, some allergies to different ingredients and vaccines and things that hopefully should be pretty straightforward as accommodation reasons. We wouldn't need to question that, and then we would focus the conversation more on what this means, how it relates to their job, and what types of accommodations may or may not be available. And in those conversations, I want to emphasize and wish to emphasize this as well, which is excellent, is the interactive process. That's going to be key here. That's part of ADA law and accommodations anyway. Is, you know, we can't just have a blanket statement that says, "This is going to be our accommodation for everyone who seeks accommodation," because it really does need to be an individualized conversation and a meeting with that employee. We're going to have to meet with every single employee. Luckily, not contractors. We don't have a duty to do that, but every employee that seeks an accommodation. And we would want to do that. We would want to understand and ask the questions that we need to be able to support that employee and the organization. But so the interactive process is really that it's conversation with the employee, with HR, with the supervisor. Our job description is the key for that role. And there may be some proposals from that employee or within the discussion that we find that we're really not comfortable with, but we review thoroughly. And based on that employee's job duties or job description, we may find that it's an undue hardship for KVH to meet that accommodation request. Then we would need to really talk about that and what that means and what we can or cannot accommodate. Or there is an option that we can accommodate it. We feel comfortable with the plan. We've talked about at the very minimum, a regular testing cycle for employees, a COVID testing cycle, but we want to be mindful of resources and, you know, not just putting a process in place that's going to further harm our system with resources, but will actually be useful to keep the employees safe. So that will be the minimum accommodation, kind of the first one we'll talk about is a regular testing cycle. If we find that there's an approved accommodation reason, possibly KN95s or more protective gear for those employees, depending on their situation. Wisha talks about job assignment, but you know, that will be a hard one. And especially with the staffing right now, we know where our needs are and we need people to be able to do those positions, so that would be a challenging one. But there's various things that we may find that, you know, the employee has some proposals as well that we can consider. And so that's really going to be the bulk of the work is those interactive process meetings with the employees and then really getting a picture of our workforce, what the impact this is going to be, what can we and can we not accommodate, getting guidance where we need to from our leadership team, from possibly our employment attorney, from Wisha, from other hospitals, because we're not in this alone and we're all connected to our different work groups. But it's going to be quite challenging and it is very challenging even for those staff that, you know, unfortunately are being asked to get something that maybe they aren't comfortable with or they're going to have to really have conversations about their employment status with KVH. It's a really challenging situation for everybody regardless.
Amanda, one of the accommodations that is not available is remote work.
Yeah.
So I think that sort of, you know, can they work from home? Can you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, you know, we've already kind of gone through all that process. You know, the people who had that option already, we've already kind of gone through that and we've adjusted the job descriptions where we need to. New remote work requests would be a very hard accommodation for us to do unless that job specifically can be done remotely and has been accomplished remotely already. But new requests for remote work are, at this stage, not a likely accommodation due to the fact that we've already really identified those jobs already that could be available.
Yeah, and regardless, remote workers are also coming.
That's right.
Required to, go ahead, Mandy. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Oh, that's just what I was going to say is that this order specifically does include employees that work offsite. So that alone does not get someone out of this order.
Exactly. That's right. And, you know, the other population that we're really working with is our new employees. What we also know is there is no exemption for new employees. So if we make an offer to somebody on October 17th and the deadline is October 18th and they haven't started their vaccination process yet, that's another challenge that we're working through. So HR is working on getting in all of our job postings to be transparent with that this, we are complying with the mandate. We're contacting all of our new hires that have already received offers to let them know the change and we're working through that process, which is going well. And then, of course, we'll be working with our students and volunteers. But so that's really, again, kind of accommodation process, very similar to what we do go through normally with accommodation, but with some specific nuances. We really won't know a lot more until we really get a picture on September 3rd of how many folks are seeking exemption or have they resigned. We have unfortunately heard of employees submitting their resignation. Not many at this time luckily, but there have been a couple that feel strongly about that. And so, you know, by asking, "Are you choosing to resign?", we're not trying to push employees in that direction, certainly. That's not the outcome that's going to be ideal for any of us and we'll touch on that with staffing and capacity. But it's because we know that some employees, their personal choice, that is what they might pursue. And it's very unfortunate. We hope that's not the case. The other accommodation that won't be, what we're pursuing is leave, extended leave or furlough option for people who are declining or are not able to come to an accommodation agreement. We need people working and we need the jobs. It's, furloughs would be the job, you know, it's usually a job-focused situation where we just don't need that job right now, but we do need people working. And so leave will not be an accommodation that we are pursuing. We have had some conversations with our unions. They've been going really well. We had a great, really touching conversation actually with our WSNA nurses and our rep. They're luckily, they've made a stance, WSNA, our nursing union, that they are pro-vaccine and they're advocates for vaccine, and they share that. Their concern is just bargaining the impacts to the employees, like we are all concerned and how this will, October 18th, what's going to happen, October 18th, and how this is going to impact the nurses and our organization. So we're all in agreement there that that's our concern. And so we are working with WSNA on an MOU, just of understanding of bargaining the impacts to the employees, not the mandate. They recognize that we have to comply with that. And we don't expect it to be too far off of what we're already headed. We've shared our process that we're pursuing with other team members and we didn't get pushback on that. So we're continuing those conversations and we'll certainly keep everyone up to speed as we need, but we don't anticipate too many issues with that, hopefully. And then we are entering that process with our Teamsters rep for our service workers and our respiratory staff. And so we just talked today with that representative and having the same similar conversations. We usually try to keep the MOUs and process and language pretty similar between both of our union contracts, just to make sure that, you know, we're treating people equally and really listening to our staff on their needs. So it's a very collaborative process. They were openly sharing. You know, one WSNA nurse actually brought up herself that, hey, I'm hearing that other hospitals are paying incentives just for people to show up to work and that's wrong and we don't believe in that and people shouldn't have to be getting extra incentives just to show up to do their job. And that was coming from our nurses. And so they're very, you know, they're feeling the pressures of the staffing and they're seeing things from both sides. So I'm really impressed with that. They say, "Gosh, we have a hard position as an employer," but they're also working side by side, seeing the impacts of COVID and also want to protect themselves and the patients with the vaccine as well. So it's been a really good conversation.
I don't know if this is for Amanda or Mandy. I want to get to Dr. Larson's comment in the chat about unemployment. But this is a condition of employment and that's the way it's written. So I was very surprised today to hear Wisha talking about furloughs. And the other thing, so if you do not comply, we cannot employ you, is the way this proclamation reads. The other thing, and this has been something I've been musing about and we've been talking about in senior leadership, we don't want to approach this as a temporary thing. And I don't believe, you know, the governor's going to reverse himself in 90 days. This is a tough, tough position for employees to find themselves in because it is statewide. And if you're giving up your nursing job at KVH, you're giving up the ability to work as a nurse in Washington State. So and when, I know Rhonda had a very tough conversation with one of her employees and he said, "Yeah, I know that. I get that, but the answer is still no." So don't think of it as temporary and there's not a lot of wiggle room when we come to October 8th that the answer is no. And either Mandy or Amanda, and again, please address Dr. Larson's note about unemployment.
Yeah, so we have worked with our representative and had some communication from WISH as well. And we do know that, of course, like we say at HR, it depends, right? And they're going to look at things on a case-to-case basis, just like we do. So that is what they've shared. However, they have said that it can qualify for unemployment based on if it's a qualified medical exemption or a qualified religious exemption. And we're not able to still come to an agreement on that and they are left unemployed, that it may qualify for unemployment. However, if the staff member doesn't follow our communication process or meet our deadlines or, you know, that we're offering an accommodation and they refuse, for example, that's reasonable, they may not get unemployment. So really kind of is going to, they're going to look into it very carefully at the state level and unemployment when they get those claims and find out what really happened, what conversations happened and what role did we play as an employer and that employee. But it is possible that they will get unemployment.
Amanda, is it true that in general, though, if you voluntarily choose not to meet the conditions of employment, that you're not eligible for unemployment?
Yes, but I think because of they're changing, I think the conditions of employment are changing. What we're hearing is also qualified reasons to receive unemployment. Medical reasons, having to leave your job for medical reasons is a qualified reason. So there's kind of mixed communication on that, unfortunately, so they may still qualify. Yeah. Yeah, is there any other questions?
Any questions from the board on the employee component?
I had a quick question for Amanda. I know that they've, I mean, some of the universities too, Washington State has just gotten rid of the philosophical exemption, just allowed the religious exemption or medical exemption. And CW is likely to follow suit, but I'm just curious how you, since you can't ask about someone sincerely held religious convictions, how that doesn't just turn into a catch-all for people who just don't want to do it? Have you had experience with this or, because I know you can't ask about it?
Yeah, it's a tough one. We have been advised again not to press, you know, too far. We do have the right, and this was expressed with Wisha today as well, they confirm this. We do have the right to seek additional documentation, even with religious accommodation. So that would oftentimes be like a letter from a religious leader that they're affiliated with, from a church, that I have seen that before as religious documentation for accommodation. But for the most part, we're not going to, that's not going to be our standard. We're not going to be questioning every religious exemption we have. But I do bring up, you know, the fact that it does have to be sincerely held because again, if we have employees that are basically saying to us that they're going to lie to us and just make up that they have a new religion, unfortunately, we've heard some of those comments. We do have the right to address that and that would be evidence enough that it may not be a sincerely held religious belief if they're basically sharing in the workplace that they're going to make up a form to get out of this. So again, it's just a matter of, we're going to have to look at those situations, get counsel, get legal counsel, work as a leadership team, you know, what's not feeling right to us and how much do we need to really push back? You know, the Nurses Union said, "Are we going to be questioned for our exemptions?" And I said, "Well, we'll guarantee you that we will have questions. We always do because we need to really understand how this is going to impact you, the organization, and our patients." That doesn't mean we're trying to question you, it just means that we need to understand the situation, so.
Well, good luck with that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Amanda, did you mention earlier when you talked about religious exemption that the order specifically says that you have to document how the order conflicts with your sincerely held religious belief?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mandy. So in our form, there is a place for that. They have to explain it. They have to explain how it conflicts. And that's a really important piece because Wisha gave a great example, you know, about eggs. Some people refuse a vaccine because if it's made with egg-based products, and I'm not a vaccine expert, so feel free to jump in, but if they have a religious belief that they cannot eat eggs, they may, for example, write on their form, "I'm going to refuse this vaccine because I cannot eat eggs. I don't have egg products and so that's why I'm going to choose to get the exemption." Well, we know they brought up the fact that this vaccine is not made with egg products. So that would be an opportunity for some education and to say, "Actually, that wouldn't be a qualified reason because your concern for seeking exemption actually does not apply to this situation." So I thought that was a really great tangible example of just where there may be a disconnect and why we have to have those meetings to try to come to an understanding.
So have you heard if there's anybody that plans to challenge this? In other words, it seems to me, from what I read, there's a little bit of vagueness, you know, healthcare workers versus a worker at a healthcare environment. So if somebody says, "Hey, I work in billing. I never touch a patient." Is there any sense that somebody like that can challenge whether or not they're actually included or has already been determined, the governor said, "If your paycheck comes from a place like KVH, you're part of this group." Do you know that answer?
Yeah, so healthcare worker, again, is broad. It's all of us. It's all of our employees. From a contractor perspective, they even brought up the HVAC person, you know. So again, these are people that, you know, for healthcare employees, you know, they may have gotten this message on the mandate already and they're aware of that. But there's a lot of our services that are critical to us, that they don't necessarily fall under this mandate, but to be contracted with us and partnered with us in healthcare facility, they will. And so it's very interesting, but yes, this means all KVH employees. They have a broad definition of healthcare, so we do know that, that it will be required of everybody, whether they're remote, whether they're on-site, whether they're licensed staff or HR like me, we will all be accountable for that.
Thank you.
It's also going to impact EMTs and paramedics. I think the most confusing group we have is really in Rhonda's Home Health and Hospice group. We're working through some of that, but it is extremely broad and it was intended to be very broad, I think.
I have a question for Dr. Larson. Dr. Larson, is it anticipated that the FDA will grant approval instead of just authorization for these vaccines by the deadline of the first injection?
So it's my understanding that...
So it's my understanding that, that Pfizer will probably be approved in the next two weeks for full FDA approval. But the governor has taken the approach that, under his authorization, he doesn't have to wait for full FDA approval. That's why that's not in either the K through 12 guidance, the, the education guidance for higher ed, the healthcare guidance. And from our perspective at Public Health, there's not very many people who are, the people that are using that as a reason not to get vaccinated is a really small percentage of the population. So it's already been proven, it's already gone up to the Supreme Court in a decision in regards to Indiana University was making their vaccine mandate without waiting for a full FDA approval. And the US Supreme Court refused to hear the case.
So is the, is the state providing any like exemption forms or any guidance like that as far as how they want, want to make this accountable or is it just left open to, you know, county by county to come up with their own information?
It's just been left to county by county, unfortunately. So we have a, a K through 12 waiver for vaccination for kids. And Central Washington University took that waiver and then basically dissected it out and made their own waiver process, which is going through their HR, similar to what Amanda was talking about here. But yeah, there's no specific waiver. I'm sure on my discussion with Ellensburg School District Board at 6:30, that same question's going to come up. So nothing from the state in regards to, to waiver process, Bob.
Yeah, and from, we did get some accommodation exemption forms, some similar ones that other hospitals are using. Again, with other HR networks and from Wishah, and we got those today after a question and answer forum. And as usual, I think KVH, we were right on track, which we're excited about. We didn't have to do too many edits and so we have some forms ready to go. And we've confirmed that they are aligned with what we've gotten as best practice from Wishah.
Any more questions about employees? All right, I think Mandy, it's off to you with what we know about the contractor process.
Sorry, so today, and we, we don't know a ton, but what we know is that we are required to verify information for those contracted staff that are in our buildings. And what we were heard today was that potentially we could ask that information from the contractor about their individual employees. So our first step that will be taking part in, hopefully the beginning of next week or at the end of this week, at the soonest, is sending a, a letter to all of our contracted companies, letting them know that this applies to them as someone who works in our buildings and starting those conversations with different points of contact at KVH. Fortunately, we're not responsible, as I think was already mentioned, for going through an accommodation process with any of these folks. And for contract workers, the onsite, offsite, offsite does not apply. So for example, with our tele radiologists, this, this does not apply to them. It is only onsite contract workers that we have to have this verification. So this is, I, I think that, yeah, it's a, the messier issue. I feel like we, we kind of, like Amanda said, it's a process we go through previously with accommodation or, or getting people's vaccine status. This isn't unusual for us, this contract verification process of other people's workers' immunization status and potentially them going through an accommodation process with their employer and somehow as understanding whether they can work in our building or not is, is very different than we've dealt with before. And it's a little intimidating, I'd say.
Yeah, so let me give you just three examples that are keeping us up at night. So at the end of this week or early next week, Ron is going to send out a letter to BK Powell and say, oh, we need the vaccine status on all of the construction workers that are about to come into our lab project. And BK Powell's going to call Ron and say, what are you talking about? So this is not on their radar at all. We have folks who reps, product reps, who are coming to the OR. They'll probably be totally in tune with it and know what's expected of them. We, for the last week or so, we've been talking about the poor Pepsi delivery guy. He's been the example that somebody's going to have to chase the Pepsi delivery guy down the hall or I'm going to get really good at, at loading the vending machines. So these examples of what they mean by contractor, what's our obligation are all over the board. So we are going to have 100% of our employees nailed down by October 18th. We are hoping to be 80% of the way to understanding what our obligation is with contractors by October 18th. So much, much messier process.
And I think to add to that, what we heard on the Wishah call as far as enforcement is, they are not looking to, you know, bust people willy-nilly. It, it's really looking at people that are willfully not following it. If we are attempting and doing our very best to understand and implement this process with contractors, I think that, that will serve us well. And of course, we, we are. So yeah, I think Julie's right, we're gonna probably get it 80% of the way there and then we'll learn some things as we go and, and improve on it. Anything else you wanted me to mention about the contractors?
Any other questions from anyone? Oh, medical staff that is not employed by the hospital. I think Dr. Martin, having reviewed that list, do you have any concerns there?
Just, I expect that most of those folks will be in compliance. Obviously, some of them, they are contracted, so they haven't had any reason to share their vaccination status with us. And I will be reaching out to council in terms of what are the implications for staff privileges for those who choose not to comply.
Okay, that is it on vaccine mandates unless people have some late breaking questions.
I mean, is there much, anything coming from the Washington State Department of Health? As far as, are they just like, hey, we're passing this on to each county again? I mean, are they like?
There was a somewhat, there was a somewhat helpful FAQ. That's what I've seen.
They're, they're not going to get into the thorny issues. They're not going to help us out with the thorny issues, so. And, you know, it's really is in, is in Amanda's wheelhouse to talk people through these accommodations. So that feels really intimidating to somebody like me, but HR knows that does these all the time. They don't do a process, 160 of them in three weeks. But, so they do know how to do this. This is a policy and a process that we already have in place. It's just not on this scale. But now there's really wishes kind of not giving what they consider legal advice. So we're getting a lot of general interpretations, but no forms, no policies, things like that.
I mean, it's pretty overwhelming. You've got 160 employees. I mean, that, that's a lot.
Yes, it is. So, so we'll move on to the current state. And I, I had, would like Dr. Martin and Rhonda and Carrie and Amanda to talk about this. And I'm really glad DeeDee was able to make it as well. So in four weeks, we're going to have 160 people's employment here possibly on the line. We're already not in a good place. So we want to give you an update on what's going on with the Delta, what our COVID sort of issues are in the hospital right now and in the state, and then talk to you about volumes in the ED staffing, critical care unit and some of our contingency planning. So Dr. Martin, do you want to lead off here?
So I'll share a little bit of information at a regional, well, the global picture. And then we'll come back around to how that's impacting us. So this is similar to what I shared in my board report last month. This is the current state data for hospitalization rates across the state. And so we're seeing numbers comparable to our previous peak in January. This gray represents data that is too fresh to be reliable. It would be nice to think that that tail down is real, but it's simply too soon to say. Case numbers show a similar pattern. Yay, we're doing better than most of the state. We're only at 280 cases, according to them. But this really, where is the one I want? There it is. To say that this is a global problem is no overstatement. Where we're seeing this regionally is in terms of occupancy for our referral hospitals. Spokane and Yakima are both tight. If you look at ICU beds, that's improved over the course of the day. There were Yakima and Spokane, we're both showing 100% ICU occupancy earlier today. It makes it very hard for us to move patients and DeeDee will be able to, to speak to that. In the hospital, we've been running typically four to five out of the six ICU beds full. Typically, one of those patients is not COVID. It takes a long time to move them out. And when we do move them out, there's somebody to take their place. And that's been the story for the last two weeks. With that, I'll pass it to DeeDee and then we can come back to questions later.
Before we pass it to DeeDee, I'd like to just follow up a little bit on the graphs that you're showing there from Ready. So we, and DeeDee and Dr. Martin are on a lot of these calls too. The data that we're seeing here from Ready or anything else is literally just, just a snapshot moment of time. And all of these numbers have remained high for the last few weeks at minimum. And so while it looks like, you know, Yakima at the time of this report may have been 97.6, you know, that maybe is a one-bed opening, not counting the person in their ED or the five or 10 that are backed up. So the verbal reports that we hear from these meetings, I would say yesterday was by far the most where there was not a single entity that said, we have space. And when I say space, it's all around staff. I think a lot of us have beds in storage and things like that, but no one has staff. No one can get staff. We're all submitting the required resource request forms through our emergency coalition saying, we need staff. And it's specialized staff, you know, as much as Julie or I would like to, or anybody else on this call would like to go in and help, it's ICU nurses, it's respiratory therapists, but it's even EVS and things like that. And so this is something where, as a state, we made the commitment not to go into crisis any one hospital alone. But in reality, everyone is hitting it at the same time and that just makes it that harder, that much harder.
And to that point, there was a story in this morning Seattle Times talking about staffing. And early on in the pandemic, a lot of the planning at the county level at Public Health and here, you focus on three S's, space, stuff and staff. And early on, we were worried mostly about stuff, ventilators, meds. But we had space, we could take over space at the fairgrounds. And we worked on the assumption that we could borrow staff from places that were just distressed at any given time. And when, in return, when we were doing fairly well and things were getting sideways somewhere else, we might be able to move people. It turns out that stuff and space are the easy ones. But a survey conducted in Washington found that 40% of nurses had left the profession since the beginning of the pandemic. That's a bigger number than I've heard. But that isn't limited to any locality. Some of those are folks that were nearing retirement and decided that this was more than they were up for at this stage of their career. Some just decided there were easier ways to make a living. It's the same thing that's being seen in restaurants where there are jobs that are going unfilled. And that really is, is the pinch point right now.
So I, yeah, I, staff is, is it, and I'm looking at the Ready report and the list of hospitals that are saying they are critical staffing, not just this week, but last week or next week as well. And 66 times the week ending August 17th, the Ready region, which is essentially the east side of the mountains, reported that there were zero ICU beds available. So 66 times in one week. I did another one of my drop everything meetings yesterday and had some great attendance from the nurse leaders here. And, you know, talking about contingency and, you know, what does crisis look like and what are we going to do? And, and the response I got was, we're at crisis. And certainly for critical care staffing, that's true. I think med search is holding their own, but it's close. And then DeeDee, also, I'd like DeeDee to talk about what the impact has been on not just the staff, but on the way we're having to manage our patients in the emergency department. And DeeDee, could you also touch on transfer legs? You're muted, DeeDee.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for including me and allowing me to speak. I was hopefully just going to be the fly on the wall, but I'm happy to share what these last few weeks have been like in, in the emergency department. It has definitely been rough. And, you know, I've been watching what Jeff and his staff are going through on Med Surge and CCU. And of course, that's going to back up into us. Our volumes are up. We are definitely probably at our highest volumes consistently in the last couple of years. Our length of stays are increased. We now have patients that hang out in the waiting room, which that is not a norm for our hospital. I have worked a few evenings and stayed late and had to go out and just kind of make a blanket statement to explain what's going on. Patients are in our hallway. We are still able to take care of the sickest of the sick that walk in the door, but it's definitely going to displace others that are non-urgent. We have held patients up to 24 hours trying to transfer them to another hospital. We continue to provide the best care we can while they're in the ER, but they're not at that specialized place. And of course, the emergency department is not a place to get rest. We are continuing to see our behavioral health patients. They still take up a bed and time. I can tell you right now, I've had a patient that's been in our emergency department for 25 hours and I was told that she will not get a bed tonight. So she will at least be there until tomorrow. We continue to call all our regular hospitals for transfer, but we have tapped in to the WMCC. That's the state transfer center out of Harborview. And, you know, we have been on waiting lists with them and with individual hospitals, sometimes three or four hospitals. We call continuously, getting, trying to get that bed update and there's just no beds in sight. And as Dr. Martin and Julie spoke and Michelle, you know, Ready, it's, we are all in this together, that is for sure. But it is definitely impacting the smaller hospitals. I feel fortunate that we still do have, you know, really good resources in our emergency department. I've got, you know, great, well-educated staff, physicians that are attentive to these patients. But I do feel for some of our smaller hospitals on the side of the state that don't necessarily have the resources that we do. But I feel almost daily that I'm one staff member away from a crisis. That if I get that, that additional sick call or that patient or that, that nurse that's out on leave, you know, you will see me in scrubs. Staff are taxed, they're tired, they're, but they're also stepping up to the plate. I've seen some remarkable people that are definitely going above and beyond. But, you know, I wonder how long can that last? Right now, I know this evening we did have a patient, we were trying to transfer Yakima had no beds. So this is, you know, hot off the press, just within the last hour. Confluent and Winatchi had one med search bed, but no telemetry or PC or ICU beds.
I know Jeff's not. I know Jeff's not on this call, but we did hear from Jeff earlier that we had a patient in CCU we were trying to transfer. And I believe we were number 40 on the waiting list for Harborview. After five days, I think we finally got them transferred to Overlook.
Yeah, emergency departments are boarding patients. I heard Yakima had like up to 20 last week in their ER.
And just to bring this full circle, both DeeDee and Jeff have lists of employees who are unvaccinated. And by October 18th, we will know whether they're going to continue to work with us or not. And I do want to assure the board that for the last six months at least, there we have been beating every bush, looking for nurses, temporaries, anything we can do to create nursing capacity and clinical capacity. So no one is saying no to anything.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say, Julie, is that we are not getting the applicants that we used to get. I think this is the first time in the six years I've been here that I don't have a list of applicants to go through when I have a nursing posting. I have hired two new nurses recently, but they're going to require training. So I can't count them as part of my staff, probably for a few months. And the other thing is the agency, there are just no agency nurses. And, you know, if, if, if I'm lucky, I can get one or two here and there, but it's, it's just not ideal.
So that's where we're at with volumes and sort of the regional, and thank you, DeeDee, that was, that was a snap presentation. We didn't warn her ahead of time. We did want to talk a little bit about contingency planning. And if you'd asked me a year ago, we would have gone to the shelf and pulled down our surge plan. As Dr. Martin pointed out, surge early on was about state stuff and space. So we said, you know, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to shut down scheduled surgeries. We're going to move into that space, free up some of the staff that we have back there. The issue with that at this point, when really our limiting factor is staff, is that a nurse is not a nurse is not a nurse. So if we close down our ORs, what we have is a bunch of RNs who are surgical RNs who know nothing about passing meds and have never worked on meds or just an entirely different skill set. So we're going about this whole surge planning, or in this case, we're actually referring to it as contraction with a lot more nuanced than we did originally. So, so Carrie and Amy Krogstad in surgery are every single day working with Jeff to look at what our capacity is on med surge. We're looking very, very closely and we have very few inpatient surgeries scheduled. So we've got to handle on not moving patients back to the med surge unit if we don't have to. The bigger question is, do we stop other surgeries? Again, we know the consequences of that were, you know, poor outcomes and, and patients that really did suffer. And what is the return on that? How many of those surgical outpatient nurses? How many of the nurses can we really deploy elsewhere? So Rhonda or Carrie, you want to have anything to add there?
We both have something to add. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'll just jump in and Rhonda, you can follow it up and correct anything that I may miss. Misrepresent, but yeah. Julie, you're absolutely right. We've, we've looked at this, uh, different ways that if, if we close down our scopes, what does that free up in terms of resources and what can they do? And, um, you know, we, we may be getting to the point where even if it is just, gosh, go be, you know, be that task nurse, be that be, you know, go do some just assist where, where they can. They obviously can do that. So, so we're, we're ready to, to pull those triggers. We still have the, the methods in place. I will be notifying our surgeons tonight just to be on their toes, get ready. Prone to run position or actually prone to stop position. And we have not been scheduling too far out since the beginning of this pandemic. We try to keep it about five weeks so that we can stay, we can pivot pretty quickly. We've talked about how clinic nurses can help. The problem with that is we're experiencing the same problems that the hospital is facing. We have 1.8 FTE at Family Medicine Ellensburg currently. That's for 11 providers. That's not a great ratio. If you think about the panels, even if you think about 1,000 people per panel, that's, that's a, that's pretty large volume of patients for 1.8 FTE nurse staff. So, so we're unfortunately not able to to be able to offer much, but we are, we have been looking at ways to, to assist our own nursing staff and then, and then adjust some of the patient care we're providing so that we're not adding to the problem. I think that's the other piece. We need to make sure that we have some solutions in the clinic that we're just, things aren't just shifting over to the hospital. Whether that be, um, you know, mainly the patients seeking care in the ER because gosh, they weren't able to get into the clinic or those types of things. So we've been looking at those schedules today and seeing how to make some of those adjustments, particularly at Family Medicine Ellensburg. It's one of our biggest and busiest clinics. So that's where our focus is right now. Rhonda, anything else you would add or change?
Um, just to add too, I think I was pretty struck by the meeting with the nursing directors and just how they are feeling that we really are at crisis staffing. I've been covering for Vicky this week and every day has pretty much been a challenge. We've had sick calls and today we were able to cover it. So it wasn't as bad today. But Jeff has open FTEs in ICU. And what we've been having to do every single day is our nursing directors are having to serve as house supervisors. Our house supervisors are then working in med search or ICU to fill that hole. And Jeff, you know, he can't work seven days a week and he can't work 24 hours a day. It's taking a toll. The care of these COVID patients, we've had five to six, um, pretty much for the last two weeks, as Dr. Martin said. Some of them have been intubated. We've had more than one intubated at a time, not necessarily both with COVID, but intubated patients. And their heavy, heavy, heavy care requiring more than what our staffing ratio and what we've hired for. So that's where the idea of the task nurse came from is the nursing directors felt like if we do close down our colonoscopies and cataracts and elective surgeries, those nurses may not be able to take a full caseload in ICU, but they can be that second pair of hands, passing medications, starting an IV, helping to bathe the patient, feed a patient. Some of these patients are so weak, it's taking two or three staff members to get them up to use the commode. So there's a lot that, that they could do if they were available to us. The other thing that we have talked about is how can we maybe incentivize staff to pick up shifts? Because right now they're not, they're tired and they need their time off from work, of course. But if we offered them some sort of an incentive payment for picking up an extra shift, can we do that? And I know that HR has had some meetings already with WSNA to talk about that. And then also if we were to provide an incentive to a clinic nurse to come over, that is a non-union physician picking up union work. So we would definitely want their support in that. So those are the things really that, that we're looking at. It's been very heavy care and short-staffed. And really with the number of staff that we all have that make up 160 plus that are not vaccinated, it's very scary to think we might be losing more and we can't afford to lose even one.
So thanks. Um, the other thing I'd point out about the, the scheduled surgeries is Scott will be the first to tell you this revenue is no part of this equation. And there's a serious optics issue. We are picking through what advantages we provide to ourselves when we shut down surgeries and weighing again, the cost benefit of doing that and cost being cost in terms of delayed surgeries, not lost revenue. So we want to be thoughtful about it, but we're also aware that if we're walking around saying, you know, we're nearing crisis, we probably shouldn't be doing cataract surgeries. So it's going to be a really careful balance going forward, I think. The other thing I, I want to say is we were not having these conversations two weeks ago. So I, this has ramped up so incredibly quickly for us. We, and as we do this planning and we talk about communication, you know, two weeks ago, we were not at this place. We know that we're, we felt the impacts of people gathering of watershed, of jazz in the valley. Are, we were down to seven or eight people being tested in our COVID clinic. We did 152 yesterday. So we are looking at where we are today and looking forward to the impacts of this vaccine mandate. Looking at having a rodeo over Labor Day weekend. We know, I, so we are trying to modulate our message with what's going to happen in the next two weeks, three weeks in mind without sounding panicked. So go ahead, Dr. Martin.
One of the things I'd add is part of the ready update was that for the first time in the last three, four weeks, we were seeing a doubling time in terms of doubling time of hospitalized cases greater than 14 days. It had been doubling just about every 14 days. And exponential growth is not what you want to see in hospitalized members.
So, um, any, any questions about any of that before we go on to public message and, and a discussion with the Board of Health?
I just wanted to comment, I, I know an ICU nurse that works for the contract staffing and they, they recently were two shifts now at KBH, new to KBH. I talked to him and he just wanted to say one difference working here versus two other hospitals been working at is he felt really appreciated. So Jeff Holdman made his way around, he was super busy, had his own patients to come say thanks and ask if he needs anything and all the house supervisors made their way over to him and said, said that they appreciate him. That's something that stood out from the other places.
So for, for the, for the employees that are not vaccinated, do we have a breakdown of their roles in the hospital? How many of them are nurses? How many of them are, you know, do we know some of those numbers yet?
Yes, we have it all by the staff, their department and their directors have received that information of the staff. We do, we don't have any vaccine verification for them.
So we know the two, the departments with the two longest lists, well, I'll, I'll roll up Amy Krogstad's. Environmental Services has the single longest list. That is a key role. Jeff Holdman and CCU and MedSurge has the next list. And there are a number of nurses on that, number of night shift and full-time nurses on that list. But there's also PCTs in the text that support them that are on that list. The next one after that is the combined surgical services with Amy Krogstad. So central supply, surgery and surgical outpatient, very heavily nurse and, and, you know, highly trained clinicians. We have some providers, but I think Dr. Martin is comfortable that he's going to be able to work through that list. So it's all over the board. Revenue cycle has a number of folks. You know, it's, I, my goal, and I'm still going to stick to it, is to not lose a single person determination over this. But regardless, and I don't mean to sound sappy here, but every single one of these conversations with employees leads with our value of respect. And we're not here to challenge or harangue or at this point even persuade we have to respect these people. And so at some, I will not lie, it is sometimes tough and there's a fine line between respect and impatience. So that answer the question, John?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So Julie, I wanted to say one thing about that, like for home health. I have literally three receptionist referral coordinators and all three of them are unvaccinated. And so if they all three choose that they won't be, or they don't have a qualifying exemption, I, I'm down a whole pocket of people that will be, they're the, they're the people that answer the phone when you call with a hospice referral and they start the whole process. I won't even have anybody left to train a new hire.
We have the same situation where it could, it will stop a whole clinic.
So we're going to continue to work on persuading. We think we need to have these conversations with both. Again, this is permanent. If they decide to leave KBH, they can't go somewhere else as a new hire. And, and thank goodness that the governor was as broad, if he's going to do this, was as broad in his definition of healthcare. You can't go to work in a clinic, you can't go to work in a long-term care facility. So you're making some pretty monumental decisions based on your willingness to vaccinate at this point or get those extensions. So, so that's where, yeah.
Oh, sorry to interrupt. What would it look like if an employee separated and then decided sometime down the line that they would have chosen to be vaccinated? Would they start the, if they wanted to return to KBH, would they start the application process over again? Is that, um, is there any thought given to that if
Yeah, I think, um, I think we'd be very happy to, to have them reconsider and, and join our team. And again, I think it just depends on how the nature of these go with those conversations with those staff. But if they're really, you know, uh, maybe they can't get vaccinated for whatever reason, or they choose not to, and then they change their mind, that we would, we're not necessarily saying that people won't be eligible for rehire ever again because we're mad at them for not vaccinated or anything like that. We'd love to have those conversations and depending on how up to date they are with their other employment requirements, I mean, I would see that as an expedited, expedited process, hopefully to get them back, back on track with us for the appropriate position. The challenge will be if they do submit a formal resignation and we are lucky enough to be able to replace their position in a timely manner, that they may not necessarily be able to just resume their, their old position. Cause staffing is so critical and I do know those department directors are going to need to get some plans in place pretty quickly, depending on what the employees choose. But, but yes, we've, we have not had any conversations about making any sweeping, no rehire. You know, we'd, we'd love to have those conversations with our experienced staff and have them reconsider employment with us.
So Amanda, is it fair to say that's likely to be something the unions are going to want to negotiate with us? That seniority would be retained for a certain
Yeah.
time kind of thing.
Yeah, I could see that happening. I haven't heard that yet, but that would definitely be something that I think we should discuss, you know, and, and there are some things like some of our benefits plans, for example, like retirement and things like that, that, you know, so within certain windows, they could be able to resume, but I imagine that, that we could have those conversations and that's actually something we should note. So thank you, Erica. That's a great, a great point that we should consider.
Any other questions about that? Okay. Um, so tomorrow, I, the Board of Health is meeting virtually and they've asked for an update from the hospital. And one of the criticisms that I have received is that the hospital really has not been vocal enough, has not been present enough to let people know just how critical we are. You know, just exactly what the situation is here. So my presentation to the Department of Health tomorrow is going to, or my discussion with them, with the Board of Health is going to be about our situation in the region, the inability to transfer patients, the critical staffing issues that we're having. I, I intend to use language like compassion fatigue. To DeeDee's point is, it is, people have worked their double shifts and their fifth 12-hour shift for the week. We're not getting a lot of those sort of volunteers anymore. So we're going to be pretty candid with the Board of Health and I want to stop there. So we're going to be pretty candid with the Board of Health and I want to stop there. And that's not something we typically do. The next step in that is Michelle and I have been working on a public statement intended to, you know, we're talking about social media to our employees, but also going to the paper with something that looks like a full-page ad. And what we're trying to do is raise the awareness of the community that the situation in hospitals in Washington State and at KBH changed and that the tools we have to get through this are masking vaccines and social distancing and they need to get on board. We've never done anything like this and and earlier in the day, this was kind of a an announcement to the board. This is now, I I really do need to hear from the board how you feel about us going to the daily record. And so can you scroll down for me, Michelle? No, up, up, I'm sorry. So I'll give you a minute to read it. I hate to spring something like this on you. The idea is to get this in the the paper fairly soon. So we're talking about current state, future state and asking for their help.
I had a couple of small comments about the document. In the third paragraph on screen here, I'm a little uncomfortable with the phrase as much as humanly possible. If you take that literally, I I get it. People are working so incredibly hard. But that is a very, you know, the literal version of that statement is a bit much in this context, I feel. The fifth paragraph after the COVID, the impact of COVID has slowed. It feels like there should be a comma after slowed. Again, I know these are very minor, but it's just, it I had to read that sentence like three or four times to make sure I understood what it was saying. And if you go to the graph at the very end of the document, again, these are just my opinions. Don't, I mean, don't officially make the change less than either the board members or Michelle or whatever feel like it. This graph has has no context for me. Fourteen, is this Kita Task? Is this Washington State? Is this America? What what is this chart representing?
Yeah, so I have to apologize for that one, John. That was, I wanted to get the graph in there and then in the ad context, it would actually be better explained. So this data comes from the Washington State Department of Health. Their most recent data was July twenty-first. And so that represents Washington State as a whole and we would put some context on that within the graph. That was the, unless Dr. Larson has something new for me, that was the most relevant data we could find.
So now go go all the way back to the top of the document. So this first paragraph, you you end the the paragraph by saying, and what you can do to help. What I wasn't clear on by the end of the document, I didn't see where you clearly told people what it is they should be doing to help. I mean, is it the vaccinate, wear masks, socially distance? Is that the call to action or is there some other thing I'm missing?
That is the call to action.
So so I guess I would just suggest somehow reiterating, this is what you can do. I I know you're saying it's just not as direct as it is in the first paragraph. I was, I was waiting for that big moment and so again, it's just my, it's just, it's just me. I'm, I let the other board members jump in with their thoughts too.
I like this. Thank you.
What, is this too much? Is this? You know, we we ran this, Michelle and I trialed this by incident command this afternoon and had a lively, lively conversation about what the the community's reaction to this is likely to be. Do you want us to hold off on this? Do we need to, you know, is going to the general public with this going to accomplish anything other than, you know, feeding an argument?
Hi, this is Terry. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, so I I read this over and I I did share it with a couple colleagues of mine. And they thought it was really good because it covered so much stuff that they haven't really been able to see. I I do agree with John's comments there, but I think that this is something that really lays out a lot of stuff going on out out in it and I like the the thing about how we're talking about how we are transparent. We're telling the transparency that we're trying to be good. So anyway, I'll let the other people go on and chat.
Erica here. I read this when it came out in Michelle's email and I was just struck by how how transparent it is. It really pleads the case of what's going on, what we're concerned might happen. I I like I always prefer to ask people, which I believe this does, rather than tell people what to do. And especially in the wake of the K-12 mandate that just came out, vaccine mandate. I don't know if you've all been on social media today, but it's blowing up in a big way and I I suspect that hospitals are not the only organizations that will have staffing issues as we head into the fall. But I I think that most people, we can give them the credit of being thinking individuals and if we let them know why we're asking what we're asking, I think that helps. I don't really see a downside to publishing this.
Yeah, hi, this is Matt. Just a couple of small suggestions. First of all, I I agree with Erica. I think it's really well said and I think like Terry said, I think it's good to be transparent and explain what's going on. Toward the end, I thought it was would maybe be good to emphasize a little more this whole notion that every healthcare worker has to be vaccinated. I thought you could say by something like according to Governor Inslee's mandate or by October eighteenth, the governor has mandated that every healthcare worker. Now, I know you sort of mentioned that a couple lines down, but just to make it clear that this is us following the governor's mandate. And that this is not something that we're, you know, taking the initiative on. And then as far as the end, I understood that this was a community action, but I like, I think Erica mentioned this. You know, we're asking people rather than sort of commanding them or demanding things. I wonder if there's a way to soften this. I could, you know, just telling people vaccinate, wear a mask, socially distance, I'm not sure. I wonder if there's a way to say please or something, I don't know. But that's the only thing I thought about. I do worry, I mean, Julie, I don't know that we can avoid getting involved in the in a debate. I mean, I think that, yeah, some people are going to be upset about it, but I don't know what, I don't know how to avoid that.
So I I at the meeting this afternoon, I got to play the role of the grumpy anti-vaxxer and the person who already hates KBH. And I just barely got out with my, my life, so.
Well, you know, the, I mean, there were some, there were people saying, and I mean, Dr. Larson knows this a lot better than I do. But there were people saying that that schools should not mandate masks and should give up state funding. State and federal funding is just so they don't, you know, and basically refuse to do what the governor says and and get up. I mean, it's just sort of crazy. So I can imagine some people say, well, don't, you know, just give up all that stuff. I mean, we, we don't have to anticipate that, but we don't really have much of a choice with a lot of this stuff, especially the vaccine mandate for employees. So I thought, and then with the other stuff with vaccinating, wearing masks and social distancing, what we're trying to say and and I, this was very clear that hey, if you want this to change and you want things to get better, this is what we need to do. So that's the only thing that's that struck me, but I think it's really well-written and very thorough and I appreciated it. Thank you.
Well, if um, if if Matt's saying it needs to be softened up, I agree, I totally agree it needs to be softened up. But I think, and then the point about, this is, this is the governor's mandate, right? Which you say that pretty clearly right above the graph, but I think that's the driving force is to keep you know, keeping it simple, simple and say, we're just following the rules. But yeah, it it looks good. I mean, it's just, it's, it's hard and it's sad that we're at this point that we have to do, the state's doing something like this, but we're stuck and we're, that's the, that's the issue. We're stuck. We're not making progress, so. Yeah, and definitely getting it out in front of the community is is a really good idea.
All right. Well, I really appreciate that and I've heard from all five commissioners now. So that is everything we had on the agenda for the this afternoon. I really appreciate everybody, Commissioner's staff, Dr. Larson, Dee Dee, S L T and Jason all jumping on with very little notice. It feels like this went, this has been being very, very quickly. So.
Julie, I have one other comment here. This is, this is a document that shows our proactive approach. If we waited to do something a month from now, we would be retroactive and we've already blown up. So by being proactive with this, we'll be able to address the other goofy issues that'll come up and consequently be able to deal with them before they probably become lots of problems. So I I think I want to thank you for this proactive approach on this, so we don't wait till we have a retroactive, awesome, you know, pit that we fall into. So thank you, Julie.
All right. Well, I will just say that it is Michelle's job to create a message that projects sort of competence and steadiness. And so we've asked her to go off script a little bit with this one. So it's been tough on her and Jan Powell. So but look forward to seeing this in the paper this weekend, social media and then a message to our employees. And we do have an employee forum next Wednesday at noon, I believe.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm just going to show up on Wednesday. So, okay.
I had one more comment. Amanda said they were kind of working with W S N A to see if we could offer some other financial incentives for picking up shifts. Could we maybe in the short run offer something else like they pick up a meal for their family after their shift from our cafe?
I was thinking the other day whether we just suspend charges, charging for meals for the foreseeable future. So.
I just think, at least with the one ICU nurse that I know that that's picking up shifts, that's their, you know, they go home and then they cook meals for their their whole family. So it would just give them a little bit of time back, I think.
That's a great idea. Let me talk to Jim Gallagher.
Good suggestion.
That's everything we had, Bob.
Great. Yeah, any other comments or feedback? Appreciate everybody's time.
Yeah, I'd like to just add one more. I'd like to add one more thing. Maybe it's a a piece of positives. So if you look at the really terrible situation that happened in India and in Great Britain in regard to the Delta variant, the numbers really do go up really fast and then they come down really fast. We don't really know exactly why, but it's probably has to do with the number of people that are actually everybody that could possibly get infected gets infected and then it goes away. It's probably four to six more weeks that we have of seeing this. So you know, unfortunately, that leads us right into the start of school. We'll see a lot more cases there. But but I truly believe it'll go away. But but we're just really kind of waiting for another variant to come out, which, you know, being vaccinated now is not going to help with our current outbreak situation, but it'll help with the next one. So Julie, I think tomorrow you're, you're the lead at the Board of Health and I'm just going to follow you and paint the same picture that you are. But thanks for doing this.
Can you clarify something? Instead of being vaccinated now, it doesn't help with the current situation? Do you mean if somebody's actively being vaccinated, getting their injection now or having already been vaccinated? Can you clarify that?
No, if somebody chooses to go tomorrow and be vaccinated, that's not helping with the current surge that we have. It'll just hap- happen. It'll help with the next surge, but it won't help. It won't help now. Yeah. No, actually, one of the things, you know, almost ninety-four percent of all of the hospitalized cases and the deaths that we've had in Washington State since February have been in unvaccinated people. So we are seeing more breakthrough cases. The more people we see see vaccinated, the more breakthrough we're going to see. But the people that are ending up in KBH in the hospital on ventilators and dying have, for the most part, been unvaccinated. We did have a vaccinated person from long-term care from Grant County that KBH took care of because they didn't have any beds available over there that passed away that had heart transplant and some other things. But for the most part, our people that are getting sick enough to be hospitalized are the unvaccinated. So so we really are in a, in a situation where this is a pandemic of the un, of the unvaccinated. And and all we can do is is talk to each one of these people individually, listen to them, listen to their reasons and I'm really proud of KBH primary care providers for 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 giving sixty-seven vaccinations in clinic the first week. That's amazing to me. Because we're really just getting ones and twos. So I think that's a real stand-up for the people that are that are doing that work.
Dr. Larson, I just want to be sure I got this right in case we use it for the ad. You said since February, ninety-four percent of the cases within Washington that have resulted in hospitalization and death are unvaccinated.
That's correct. That's correct. I'll send you the document.
Thank you.
One other quick question, Dr. Larson, since I have you. I know that that I guess they're going to recommend booster shots in a month or make them available in a month. Do you have any position or or any thoughts about where that's going?
Yeah, so the president kind of threw us all a curveball today, although we knew that was coming. Most of us have our feelings of why it was announced today, but the president's in the hot seat currently. But we will have vaccination. So we currently have third vaccinations for people with solid organ transplants. Severe immunodeficiency like untreated HIV and those type of things. So we have a small percentage of people that are getting third vaccinations. And then, and then we have booster vaccinations that will be offered starting September twentieth. That still has to go through the FDA and the ACIP approval, but that's eight weeks after our second vaccination. So I'd have to look at my card, but I would probably be one of those where where September twentieth would probably apply to me. And then the other thing that we have coming down the pike at some point is vaccinations for kids five to eleven. So we have lots of vaccines moving forward. The health department's setting up a tabletop with leaders. A lot of you will be getting requests from Tristan to participate in this, so we can kind of solve this problem as a community like we did before, knowing that we can't expect KBH employees to bear the same level of burden as they did the first round. Because you're already working hard enough. So we'll find other ways to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And now I have to step off and talk to all of the Ellensburg School District employees. So so we'll see y'all later. Yeah, this is, this is a nice crowd. Okay.
So anything else? Any other comments from senior leadership or board?
No place else I'd rather be. It's all I'll say.
I I just want to echo something Julie alluded to. When we talk about compassion fatigue, it's something that affects the public. It affects all of us as well. And I reading more and more about the challenges and the toll it takes on nurses and doctors to render care for somebody who by their behavior has given you evidence that they in fact don't care. And that's the space a lot of us are operating in right now.
Yeah, that's sad. Thank you.
And this is still the best place to be.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody. Yeah, have a good evening and keep moving forward.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
You've got this.